I'd like to call the February 10, 2011, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Here.
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 Ah, here. Our first order of business is council minutes. We have council minutes from the meeting of January 13, 2011. We have minutes of the January 22, 2011 city council retreat and minutes of the January 31, 2011 public meeting. Do I have any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve the meeting minutes from January 13, January 22 retreat and January 31 public meeting, 2011.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 Next order of business is matters of special privilege. I believe we have none today. Is that correct? And then, public hearings, and again, I believe there are none. Correct? That brings us to our next order of business, which are reports, the first being the monthly financial statements. Is there anything in particular?
No, nothing in particular this month, other than to say, at the seventh month point, we're still running really very close to where we were last year at this point. Actually, revenue's running just slightly ahead and expenditures just slightly behind. So, we feel pretty good where we are relative to budget at this point.
Does anybody have any questions for the city manager on the financial reports? If not, the next order of business is monthly departmental operating reports. Anything in particular you want to point out?
Well, I'll just point out one thing. You'll notice under the city manager reports, one of the line items that we look at is the amount of healthcare premiums paid and healthcare claims paid. And so, we can track on a month-to-month basis how we were doing relative to prior year. And that's important because it gives us an idea of where we're going in the future in terms of rate increases. And our claims paid this year are running slightly ahead of where they were last year. So, we're taking this information and we're working now with our healthcare provider, or Anthem, it's not really a provider, but our insurance company, to do some early projections earlier than we normally do and get a better fix on what we're looking at for next year's budget.
So, again, to, you know, we essentially pay premiums based upon use during the previous year, and so, that's...
We pay premiums based on expected losses, which more than anything else are based upon your experience. And that is the major component that determines what will end up paid.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the operating reports?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. If I could go back to the financial report, I made a note of a question, but I didn't ask it at the time.
Please do.
Thank you. The, there's a transfer, help me understand better, Jack. Page, it's finance report, page one. Column on the right, transfers from or to surplus and a negative 470. Tell me, what does that mean?
Yes. The, there's three lines there. The first one being the general fund revenue. That's simply the summation of everything else on that page. So, for instance, for 2011, we're at $18.2 million. The line at the bottom is what has been paid as a result of expenditures. And so, that, the line that's involved at the bottom is simply the expenditure line, and it's identical to the line on page two. So, then, the transfer to or from surplus line tells us whether we are, at that point in the year, having to go into reserve funds or whether we're actually running a surplus on a cash basis through that time, point in time. So, right now, we infect, because we've brought in $18.2 million and we've spent $17.7, we're running roughly a $500,000 surplus at this point in time. And that just changes month to month with cash flow more than anything else.
So, our surplus has gotten bigger?
No, you can't really say that. It just means, at this point in time, this is the result. We could have some large bills next week that would change the whole picture. So, it's a cash flow thing more than really telling you, you can't reach any conclusion. So, you can't, you can't say, based on that, the surplus is going to be $500,000 more than it was last year at all. We'll just have to see how the rest of the year goes before we know.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else have questions on either the financial report or the operating reports?
Yes, sir.
If not, the next order of business is planning reports. I believe we have none. Okay, thank you. And next is city manager reports. We have one, revenue sharing sidewalk project award of bid.
Yes, I'm going to ask Mr. Clayton if he'll give this report.
Mayor, members of council, as you probably know, it's been a while, but we received approval from VDOT for some revenue sharing money a few years back, almost three years now. Of course, revenue sharing money is a 50-50 proposition, 50 from the city and 50 from state funds, state and federal funds. And five, we have what we call our five sidewalk project. And the five sidewalks include the Route 199 sidewalk, essentially from the Carriage Homes to Jamestown Road. It connects that neighborhood with the rest of the city. And the neighbors out there are very anxious for that project. Nassau Street, from Francis Street to Court Street. This provides a brick sidewalk along that area where our tour buses come and drop folks off. So, it'll give them a nice walk into the restored area. Richmond Road, from College Corner to the Wawa Store. The whole block between College Corner and Armstead there, that is all concrete. Will be brick. And then, there's some, there's some pieces along the way between Armstead and the Wawa Store that are concrete, that will be all bricks. So, we'll essentially have a brick sidewalk all the way from College Corner to Scotland Street. So, finish it, the brick sidewalk on the east side of Richmond Road. South Henry Street, between the DeWitt Wallace Gallery and Bicentennial Park, there's a short piece in there that's a concrete sidewalk, and this will fill in the brick. We'll have the brick sidewalk all the way through to Newport Avenue. And finally, South Bounder Street, bricks, another brick sidewalk, College Corner to Grigsby Street. And that will complete the brick sidewalk along College property. We took bids on these sidewalks, and the bids range from $187,000 to $328,000. The low bidder is Messmer Contracting. The bids did come in quite a bit lower than we expected. We're kind of attributing that to the fact that it's obviously just out of the economy and people are hungry for work. And also, we did put a pretty big project out. We packaged a bunch of sidewalks and put them in one project. So, we think that helped us a little bit. The low bidder, Messmer, we did check references on him. We haven't worked with him before. We checked quite a bit on the references, and there's a letter attached to the council memo from Aaron Small with AES, who is our consultant on the project, supporting Messmer. Also, we received an email today from VDOT telling us that we have the authority to move forward awarding the bid. So, your, there's a, the recommendation had a contingency on there about needing VDOT approval. So, your approval today, if you do that, will not need, will not need VDOT. You won't have any contingency on your approval. And finally, they also told us that, since the bid came in so low, that we had originally, we're going to put in $50,000 of our own money, of unmatched money. That goes away too. So, the all project cost will be on a 50-50 basis. So, that was a bit of good news. So, that's all my presentations. So, we're anxious to get moving on this because we've been a long time waiting, so...
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Clayton. Does anybody have any questions for...
Not a good question, just a comment. Mr. Clayton, thank you for working through this process. I know it was much more involved and lengthy than folks might have anticipated or preferred. And the brick sidewalks will be wonderful and welcome additions to the streetscape. But I think most importantly is that connectivity between the Holly Hills Carriage Homes and Jamestown Road to actually give folks, for the first time, the opportunity to walk from their home into the rest of the city, which is something we're striving for throughout the community.
We were actually fortunate that VDOT approved that sidewalk because it's an unlimited access roadway. So, they don't do that very often. So, we, that'll be a nice, nice, nice project for us.
Thanks for hanging in there on that.
Does anybody else have any questions?
I have a question. Mr. Clayton, the third project, the Richmond Road, goes by Tribe Square, I figure, thinking about it. Goes from College Corner to the Wawa.
Right.
Is Tribe Square going to be done by then? Are they going to work? I thought the brick sidewalk in front of Tribe Square was part of the, that project.
I'm not sure how we, do you recall, Reed, that was in that project or just with ours? I forgot now. Because we've been dealing with this thing so long.
Yeah.
That came after, after the fact.
The sidewalks adjacent to Tribe Square will be built in conjunction with that project.
Tribe Square.
So, there will be brick sidewalk along Richmond Road.
So, whatever Messmer does will hook up? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Dan, one other quick question. The sidewalk along Bounder Street from College Corner to Grigsby Street, is that going to be the same width or will that be, is there an opportunity to widen that at all or...
There's not a lot, a lot, because there's some trees and stuff along the way. We looked at that, and then, so it's probably going to stay the same width.
But just replace the concrete with bricks?
Yes, sir.
Okay, terrific.
Dan, talk a little bit more about the $50,000. The city's going to be saving $50,000 because of the bid came in.
Yeah, that, those, the revenue sharing money is going to be competitive, and we, a lot of localities will kind of throw in some money to, to make sure application look better. And we did, we did that. But because revenue sharing, there's more money available on revenue sharing now because the bids are so low, we're no longer required to make, to use our unmatched money.
Good.
So, the project will all be on a 50-50 basis.
Gotcha. And this money had been set aside in the CIP already, is that correct?
Yes.
So, Jack, I guess that money not being spent in CIP would return to general funds of some sort, or do we leave it there?
Yes, actually, the, the money was budgeted in prior years, and it's been carried forward until now that we awarded. The, that, to the extent the project is under the budgeted funds, then those funds simply remain unspent and are available for reprogramming in the future. It's simply a savings and it stays in the bank.
Has our, traditionally, if those monies were in the CIP, would we keep them there and carry them forward, or is that just a total new decision?
Yeah, once the, new decision. Once the project is completed, that account will be gone. And then, but the funds are still there, so they can be re-appropriated in the future. And let me also just say, with regard to the delay, a lot of this was because of the stimulus package came out from the federal government not long after this started. And all the emphasis in VDOT was getting the stimulus money spent and jumping through all of the federal hoops to try to do that. It's no small task to spend that money. And so, this was statewide. And so, we saw all the resources come off of revenue sharing projects at the state level in terms of just getting them through the process, and that's what delayed this so long.
Good. Just as tight budgets, I think it's good to be able to have that savings that could be utilized somewhere else.
The other thing that's interesting to me, I think it's remarkable that that money didn't somehow get taken off the table or disappear along the way. And so, to still have that, as we've seen in other circumstances.
And I think that's a testament to city council's priority of pedestrian connectivity throughout the city.
I was thinking of the state level.
Just to remind you, I want to let you strike that last...
Yeah. Any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council authorize the city manager to award the bid and execute a contract with Messer Contracting LLC based on unit prices in the amount of $187,042.95 under the VDOT revenue sharing program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Nudse.
Aye.
Mr. Palm.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Farley.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Good. Long awaited, as we know. Next order of business is city attorney reports, and this is an amendment to the B-Pole ordinance, proposed ordinance 11-02.
Last year, the General Assembly added the definition of security broker and security dealer to 58.13700.1. Those definitions are not the same as our current definition of broker and dealer in our B-Pole ordinance. This ordinance bring those, brings those into conformity. It also provides the calculation of gross revenues to exclude any monies that are paid to third-party independent brokers as a commission, which is also required now by the statute.
So, this is really a housekeeping...
This brings our ordinance into compliance with the state code.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question from Ms. Shelton. It's more of a process question. Is there a system in place where the city is notified by the state or some entity or agency that these changes have been made and they might affect us? And then, we do the, you do the research?
We do a legislative update for department heads every year where we look at the changes that were made by the General Assembly. And we note whether or not there's a change in our ordinance that is available or required as a result of that change. And then, we spend the next several months putting those into place.
So, it's incumbent upon each locality around the state?
Yes. We have assistance from the local government attorneys of Virginia and the Virginia Municipal League in order to do that. But we ultimately are responsible for making sure that the provisions in our ordinance match the state code.
And if we weren't diligent in this regard, we could have problems.
We could.
It just seems like an unfortunate situation.
Well, we've put internal measures into place to make sure that doesn't happen.
Oh, I appreciate that, and I'm very thankful for it. But it just, it seems like there ought to be a better way statewide.
One more unfunded mandate. Anybody else have any questions? I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we amend the B-Pole ordinance as outlined in the attached memo, ordinance 11-02.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Nudse.
Aye.
Mr. Palm.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Farley.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye. Great. The next order of business is unfinished business, and this is the Arts and Cultural District proposed ordinance 11-01. At our last meeting, we were discussing this and tabled the discussion. So, we will pick up the discussion at that point. Let me lead with some questions, and these questions may be to Ms. DeWitt or Mr. Nestor or Ms. Shelton. So, let me see where we are. Ms. Shelton, let me see if I understand what, exactly what this ordinance does. Essentially, there are already zoning and ARB and other types of requirements or regulations in place for this part of the city.
Yes.
Those do not change as a result of this, is that correct?
That's correct.
What, my understanding is, what this ordinance does is simply identify this area as an arts district under the state categorization of arts district as an area where, for economic development purposes.
That's correct.
And secondly, sets up a procedure for businesses to apply for essentially tax incentives and sets up a process for that, is that correct?
That's correct. And it establishes what the tax incentives are.
So, it sets up tax incentives, specifies what they are, and establishes a process for that.
Yes.
Now, my understanding is part of the process is that the ordinance enumerates a number of different businesses that are eligible for this. But it also creates an open, an open-ended area for creative economy businesses where, if someone isn't on that list, they could apply for those tax incentives.
Yes.
Is that correct? And that application process would go to the city manager or his designee...
Yes.
...in order to make that decision. Do we have other types of situations where the city manager or a designee of the city manager makes a decision similar to that, say, for a parade or for an event or for other types of things? I mean, is that a way that cities normally do this type of thing?
It is. The building inspector, the police chief, the fire chief, they all have situations where the city manager is empowered to appoint a designee to handle certain situations, not necessarily tax incentives. I think this is the first time we've done this type of, an arrangement. But we have similar circumstances with other department heads usually in the city who are given the authority by the city manager per the city code.
Great, thank you very much. This may be for Mr. DeWitt. The, some background to this process that's brought us to this ordinance. In your presentations to city council and to, in public meetings and what have you, you've talked about this. But let me make sure I understand all of the background of this, that in part, there was a discussion in city council about the potential for an arts district. And a decision was made to create a focus group to look into this.
Yes.
And that, who appointed that focus group?
The focus group was appointed by city council through the mayor at that time in the Economic Development Authority. They were asked to jointly do that.
And how, what was the makeup of that?
There were, do you want the actual...
No, no, just, just a broad concept.
Sure.
I don't need the, you know, X, Y, the personal one.
I'm happy to. The mayor chaired that task force. There was a member of the Economic Development Authority. The two staff people were the planning director, Reed Nestor, and the Economic Development Director, myself. We wanted to make sure we had artists, creative professionals, businessmen who are already located here. We had a commercial broker and also a banker. We wanted to make sure we had a mix throughout the city of these different types by occupation but also by age. We wanted to make sure we had sort of that age.
Yeah. And there were residents of various parts of the city were included in that.
Exactly. And business owners in various parts of the city.
Now, when that was put together, there were no areas identified for this, is that correct?
No, sir, there were not.
So, so, but, but there were people who represented various areas of the city.
Sure, just by the nature of where they lived or where they worked. Sure.
And there wasn't an effort to exclude any area of the city in appointing that, is that correct?
No, sir.
In putting this ordinance together, I mean, there were some costs associated with that task force and a consultant was involved. But, oh, once that report was established, what's been the cost to the city besides staff time of getting to this ordinance?
Zero.
Zero, that's okay. That's what I thought. The question's been asked about why residential areas are part of this. And let me see if you can help me understand sort of what's going on with this. The area that's been identified has several types of zoning, some of it commercial zoning along Richmond Road. But the residential part of this has a particular zoning. Could you tell me a little bit about that?
Certainly. The residential portion of the proposed district has a zoning that allows an artist to live in one of those residential structures and also have his studio and do his work there and have some small retail space there. That can only happen through a special exception through our Board of Zoning Appeals. So, and that was enacted back in 2008 through the comprehensive plan implementation. So, the planning commission approved that, and then it went to city council and was approved back in 2008. And that exists in four different areas of the city, which through our work with the task force and the consultant, we paid special attention to those areas, knowing that the zoning was already complimentary to an arts district.
Now, tell me a little bit about, you know, if I were a property owner in this area and had, say I was an owner or leased to someone who wanted to do this, the, they had, could have a studio or workshop in the area, and they could sell their work out of that workshop or studio, but they couldn't have an art gallery there, they couldn't have a, what we would normally think of as a retail business there. It would be really a very limited type of activity related to their work and their workshop, is that correct?
And their studio, that's my understanding. And you may want to hear from Mr. Nestor if there's anything else to add to that, Reed, of zoning.
Your, your observation is correct. In the RS3 district, you have to live in the house. You can have a gallery or workshop that's no larger than a third of the floor area in your dwelling with a maximum of 600 square feet. You're allowed to have a two, two and a half square foot sign, but you have to live there. As opposed to in the adjacent LB2 district, you can create a gallery or workshop, but you don't have to live there.
Okay, thank you. So, the sense of businesses in a residential neighborhood really is, it's not businesses in the sense that most people think of them as a retail business or something. It really is much more constrained and much more limited, is that...
Yes, I would compare it more to a home-based business, except it does allow this, this studio activity where you might be, you know, actually painting or throwing your pots. That, the type of artistic, artistic work.
So, if someone were to locate in this area and do this, or locate in a commercial area where they could have a commercial activity, and that's sort of along Richmond Roads, there are designated commercial areas, what arrangement do they make with the city? Is there a contract with the city to achieve, to obtain these tax incentives? What exactly is the nature of that relationship?
The nature, one thing that's in the ordinance before you is, we are requiring these businesses as part of the application to sign a five-year agreement with the city, saying that they intend to stay there for five years, and it will show their business plan and their, including pro formas. And that was put in there to make sure the intention to be there was long-term, and not that they just wanted to be there for one year to get their free B-Pole and then move on. Now, the private market, the business decides whether they shut their doors in a year or in 10 years. But we're asking them to show that commitment and sign that agreement with that intention.
Now, this may be for you or Ms. Shelton. Does that agreement have any impact whatsoever on the, say, on someone who leases a home or rents a home in that area and have the studio and get, have this agreement with the city? Does this in any way affect my rental agreement or lease agreement with the property owner? Does this have any impact whatsoever on that?
No.
They're totally independent. And so, the lease arrangement really is a separate legal agreement from this, and this does not impact that in any way?
The consequence for breaching the contract with the city of Williamsburg, say, if they can't make the business work and they leave, is they either are not entitled at that point to any further tax incentives, or in some instances, that they have to refund the city some of the incentives that they received. But there is no effect on the lease signed between the business and the property owner, and no obligation on the part of the property owner to continue to lease to the business if it isn't working or they're not paying their rent.
Okay, right, thank you. That's helpful. Does this ordinance create any restriction on any property rights for any property owner in this area?
No.
So, it doesn't, doesn't change zoning, doesn't change ARB, doesn't change any, has no impact on what they can do with their property as a result of this ordinance?
Right. The existing property rights and ordinances all will remain the same after this, if this is adopted afterwards, as they are today.
Someone had, there are multiple questions about parking, but in terms of this, there was one question about, could this create the ability if someone requires to, for you to allow their driveway to be used for parking? Or does it infringe their property rights for on-street parking? And I guess my question is, as a property owner, do I have a property right in on-street parking, or is...
You do not have a unique property right to public on-street parking. If it's a city street and their parking is allowed on it, anyone who is in the city with an automobile can use that space.
And, and there's nothing in this ordinance that would require me to use my driveway or allow someone to use my driveway?
No.
Okay. That's what I thought. There have been some questions about sort of the interest that might exist in this area. Michelle, could you tell me a little bit, I think in one of the earlier meetings you talked about, you've had a number of inquiries. Can you talk a little bit about sort of what activity has occurred... what activity has occurred since this discussion began, and have there been new businesses that have located here, you know, arts or creative economy-type businesses, and have you gotten inquiries from businesses of that nature?
Sure, and that's one of the intentions of an ordinance like this, is to draw attention to, to a city or an area of the city, so that the private market has an opportunity to rent, lease, or sell to businesses who are interested in coming here, who might initially be attracted because of the tax incentives. And, yes, since January, I've, I've actually heard from now seven prospects who are interested in bringing in arts business to the, to the city because of the, the media and the other press, the other interests or exposure that we've received from this, this discussion in Proposed Arts District. I also want to add, we have a, a prospect who, who reached out to me about eight months ago, and he said the reason he looked at Williamsburg was because he read about the arts district. And he said, he didn't necessarily need to be in an arts district, but he wanted to be in a city that thought about things, that were forward-thinking and, and such as an arts district, and that really excited him. And so, he quickly eliminated other competition and wanted to be in the city of Williamsburg. And, and he's, he said this publicly, so I think it's okay to tell you, he's currently renovating a, a commercial space on Prince George Street to move his business into, and, and credits the arts district from, for first attracting him to, to Williamsburg.
Yeah, thank you. I think I have one more question and then I'll, I'll go to other council members. Would it be possible to extend this tax credit to other areas of the city if, if council thought or, or staff recommended that there might be another area where this also would be appropriate, what is?
Certainly, and, and I'll point out, there are other tools that the state allows us to do around tax incentives that are very similar to an arts district, such as a technology zone or revitalization zone, a tourism zone. So, those are the other three very similar tools that the state also allows localities to do. So, yes, it's council's decision about where it's located and what the incentives are, and it can be anywhere in the city.
Okay, right, thank you. I, I have some more, but at this point, I'll turn it over to.
You have more?
Well, I've got a list of 47 questions.
I've tried to cross them off as we went along, so I didn't duplicate, but could you touch on this?
Michelle, could you talk for a moment about a, a sitting council's ability to bind a future council's decision-making, other than in an instance, the one thing I can think of is if, if we take on a financial obligation and there's repayment involved, then that decision requires future activity. But, future councils still have flexibility in how they execute that.
Yes, they do.
How does, could you?
This, this council makes decisions for this council. Some future council may decide to make a different decision, and they have the right and obligation to do that if they so choose. So, this council does not make decisions for future councils. So, if this council, for example, changed an ordinance, a future council could change the ordinance again.
And, just to make sure the point is clear, this council does not have the ability to change an ordinance or make a decision and say, this can never be changed?
Those decisions cannot be irrevocable.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Witt, there was a, a reference in the art space report to reinvesting in neglected rental property, was, was that language, what was the source of that language?
That was from the art consultant, Art Space.
And was not the city's perception of, of any neighborhood or this considered neighborhood?
Yeah.
Okay. Could you talk a little bit about, I've heard some artists speak about the advantages of co-locating studio or workspace in a residential space, and how that can become more economical in total for the artist if it can be accomplished in one place as opposed to dividing it up among two? Could you speak to that point?
Certainly, and that was one thing we learned from the consultant, when they, when we looked at, sort of, the current reality, what we have now, and we looked at that zoning that allows an artist to, to have a studio in, in his or her home. They were astounded by that and told us that we already had a leg up over most other communities because just the nature of zoning, most artists have found that they have to rent, lease, or own two different spaces, one to live and one to, to work in, because zoning doesn't allow them in the same place. So, when you allow them in, in the same building, there's, there's certainly a cost savings for them. They no longer have to pay for two different facilities and two different zoning districts. We also know that, that it's helpful if they're trying to get a mortgage or a loan from a bank. A bank's more willing to do that when the zoning ordinance says it's okay to do both of these uses. Actually have a friend who, who tried to do that in Port Warwick and had difficulty with the bank, because they're not used to that, sort of, live above, work below, that, that used to be so common in America. So, that zoning ordinance reassures a bank when they're looking at lending. It also reassures in the same way an insurance company. So, when you're getting insurance on, on your home, that is also where you have a studio and a business, the insurance companies are much more comfortable when there's a, when the zoning says, indeed, that, that's allowed.
Thank you. Some people have, I'm not done, though. Some people have asked, why is the Economic Development Director and the Economic Development Authority focusing all of their energy, effort, and attention on this area instead of looking at economic development opportunities elsewhere in the city? Is this the sole focus of your efforts right now?
No, sir, I have quite a few things on the table and, and doing quite a different activities throughout the city, always responsive. Even when I get a, a creative economy prospect, which I've, I've received these seven calls in the past month or so, I always assure that they know what's available throughout the city. But there are, we're certainly working in the northeast triangle on a task force and, and the city, the EDA has other programs through its e-commerce grant, its sign grant, its demolition grant, where we are using these citywide.
And, there have been questions about, what is art space's role going forward? What, what's the city or art space looking at for redevelopment? Could you just touch on the, the other aspects of this concept that are independent of the actual arts district ordinance?
Sure. The arts district report that came back from the task force and, and council endorsed last May recommended three things, and one is this ordinance that we're talking about today. Another would be to bring art space back as a consultant to do a detailed market survey to find out what artists and creative businesses actually need and want. So, that, that would be a separate step. And then a third step was to look at unique characteristics of the buildings, if there's any opportunity in the proposed district for the city to facilitate or encourage the private market to look at an anchor activity, which might be, for example, the Tioga property is, is vacant and looking for redevelopment. So, if the, if the market wanted to come in and do an art gallery there, that would be seen as a, as a good thing for this district. Also, it was discussed heavily that there are low-income tax credits available for artists' live-work space, and that would be something that the, the private market might look at as well, to provide some, some housing for artists and creative businesses. But those are, as you said so clearly, those are separate steps. We've not, we haven't gotten the green light from council to sign any contracts or do anything yet. That would be a, a process.
And if art space, say we do additional studies, and we, and we don't even know if we did the study, who would be our partner all throughout, or if, if there was redevelopment, whether art space would be connected with that?
Right.
But, using art space's model, if there was a property that came up for sale or that the city owned, such as a Tioga, and it looked like it made sense to redevelop, and art space's model of subsidizing housing, where do those subsidies come from?
Those are federal low-income housing tax credits, which are used for, for residential projects all over the nation, and some locally as well. And there is a, the federal law does allow you to create those housings for creative businesses and in artists, because they know that they, they typically, the synergy created around them living together makes their businesses more successful, and they typically are priced out of the market, which we've experienced, like most communities.
And some have questioned, well, why can't you tell me what it's going to look like? Why can't you tell me what it's going to be? Why can't you tell me what the end, end goal or end result is? And at the same time, others have said, well, given the city's existing guidelines, whether they be zoning or, I think primarily architectural review, how can you create the same kind of arts district that I'm familiar with from other communities? Could you talk to those points?
Sure, and that was one thing, the, the arts task force that started their work over a year ago, that was the first thing they did, that let's look at other arts districts and see what we can learn from them. And what we quickly learned, or what that task force quickly determined is, no, arts, arts district is exactly like another. So, in fact, anything that happened in Williamsburg would be very unique to Williamsburg, to what our economy is and what attracts people here, and also to our architectural review and other zoning regulations. So, we realized that, that what happens here may not look like what's on Broad Street and, and Charleston or, or other areas of the country. It'll be unique to Williamsburg. And the reason we can't explain what the, what exactly it will look like is because so much of this is dependent on the private market. And as I've said before, if the property owners don't want to lease, rent, or sell to, to artists or artists' uses or creative businesses, then it won't happen.
Yeah, and I might add, if, if we did have a predetermined vision that we were set on accomplishing with a particular outcome, then we would in some way be infringing on people's property rights.
Exactly.
Michelle, this is, someone has asked whether or not the city would come in and attempt to establish a homeowners' association in this area? Could you talk to, to that point?
We do not have the authority to do that. The property owners would have to establish their own homeowners' association.
And if they desired that sort of association, they are free to work that out amongst themselves, and the city does not have a role in that?
We do not have a role at all in that.
Okay. I have one more question for now, and I guess I'll ask Ms. Scott, who don't call on you very often. You're diligently capturing the questions and answers that are going back and forth here. These will become part of council's formal minutes of record, is that correct? Once those record, once those minutes are approved by city council, assuming that takes place at our next meeting, those then become a document of record and that will be posted on our website, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Scott?
All right. I'll have a left, I'll have a left, may hold on.
Sure we have.
This is probably a question for Mr. Nestor and Michelle, but art space has made a mention of deed restrictions moving forward as land would change hands. What, if any, role would the city have in that?
The only role the city would have in any deed restrictions is for property that is owned by the city of Williamsburg. We do not have the authority to impose deed restrictions on private property.
That's good. And also, this is probably another question for you. These, these are some, these home occupations, how would public access laws regarding handicap ramps and so forth apply?
Mr. Skinner, who is the co-compliance administrator, and I spent some time this week talking about that. This is Title III of the ADA, which governs private commercial property, as opposed to Title II, which governs public property like the municipal building. All business owners are responsible to provide reasonable accommodations to persons with disabilities, but what those are is dependent a lot on the factors of that particular business. That's determined on a case-by-case basis. Generally, if an existing property is upgrading the property, they're rehabilitating the property, they're creating, they're, they're making alterations, those alterations would have to be ADA compliant. If it's new construction, the new construction would have to be ADA compliant. But that, other than through the building permit process and the building code, we don't enforce. If there's a complaint about access, that would go to the Department of Justice.
That's good, that's good. Mr. Witt, it's been asked in public meeting, and we didn't, it's been, it's been conveyed to council that there's very little, if any, residential vacancy. Can you give us some idea of the commercial vacancy?
I can. We calculated that earlier this week, and thanks to the real estate assessor's office for helping me with that. The commercial vacancy, which is office and retail space in the proposed district, is at 18%. And to give you a comparison, citywide, the commercial vacancy rate is 12%.
Very good. That's all I have.
So, so 150% of the citywide commercial vacancy in that area is 150% of citywide?
Yes.
That's all I have to know.
Yeah, Michelle, of the, of the task force, did anybody live in this particular area? That we've kind of outlined here?
No, we did have Marshall Warner with Chesapeake Bank, whose business, he, he works adjacent to the district. I, I can say that once we saw that this district looked like it was having the most potential in the research, we did invite many residents of the, and businesses of that district to a focus group meeting, and, and I do have that list. So, they were emailed and, and received a letter in the mail to come to a focus group meeting.
The, there was some discussion at the, at the community meeting the other day about the makeup of the residential portion, and how much of that is rental versus owner-occupied, and I think there was some disagreement. Have we been able to kind of drill that down any better?
I'll, I'll have to ask Mr. Nestor.
In, in terms of the percentage being rental or owner-occupied?
The, just for this area. The latest figures we had from last year, and I, at, at our meeting, I quoted what we had for the comp plan, was for the West Williamsburg area was 33% owner-occupied.
But that also includes all the way down to Virginia Avenue?
No, it doesn't. That's West Williamsburg Heights. This is just the, the area off the F Street and with the vacant, is West Williamsburg.
Thank you, Reed. Just in terms of a, a broad vision of what we're looking for 15, 20 years from now, it would seem to me that there would be multiple artisan, creative economy-type businesses in this area that would feed off each other, kind of create a synergy. How likely is it for that synergy to happen if, in fact, the, the property owners aren't interested in, in leasing to these people?
If, if the properties owners don't lease any of these businesses, it will not happen.
Right, and, and still there's no cost to the city?
Right.
Right, okay, thank you.
Jude?
You can sit down, Michelle, because I don't have any questions. I think we've asked the questions. I do have a couple of things I'd like to say, though. I'll start by saying I'm in favor of this ordinance. I think it's a really good thing for the city. Four concerns have been raised, we've talked about some of them, but I would like to just mention them. This is not a zoning change. I think we need to make that clear. So far, we haven't sent, spent very much city money on this, if any. As Michelle just said, 12% of the commercial vacancy rate, there's a 12% commercial vacancy rate in the city, there's an 18% commercial vacancy rate in this area. And finally, the, the question about what the current council can do and what a future council can do. If there are five different people up here in a couple of years, if everybody is different over in the municipal building, it is still illegal for us, for a city, to take private property for commercial, for economic development, right? Doesn't matter who's where, it's illegal, so. And finally, I'd like to say that in a state where the Dillon Rule makes it so hard to get anything done, I think we need to commend both the Economic Development Authority and the city staff for taking advantage of this. We can finally do something, and I think it's a really good thing that we're doing. Finally, in regard to the parking, which I keep hearing about, if we were to have a parking problem in this area, if there were so many people coming to, to go to the art galleries and to visit the retail stores and everything, I think it would be wonderful, and we can then deal with the parking problem, as we have dealt with it in other places in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any further comments or questions?
Did you ask the question about this district precluding any other district in the city?
Yes.
I have some comments, but I don't have any more questions, so I don't want to, if other people have questions.
If there are, before we go to comments, if there are other questions, please.
Well, I do, I guess, a couple of comments, uh, questions, rather. In this area, are there any art galleries or artisans in there, or do we have much of that type of economy going on today?
There is a ballet studio located in this district, and they, they occupy about 5,000 square feet, and we do have a business about to move into the, the new City Green that, that is a creative business. They actually sell dance apparel, so.
Okay, and?
Oh, I'm sorry. And, and I, we would consider Fleming's a creative business as well, with their, their engraving and the different things that they do, they do.
Right. Can, without divulging any, any private conversations that you've had with this business that's locating on Prince George Street, how was it that he didn't decide, that he decided to go there versus being part of what could be an arts district if that was something that was, that was appealing to him?
Well, and, and that's what made it a very interesting case, Councilman, because Well, and that's what made it a very interesting case, Councilman, because he said that he didn't necessarily want to be in the arts district. I mean, he didn't mind, but it was just the fact that the city was talking about it that first attracted him to the city, and then where he is locating, he chose because of foot traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just, would the radio station also qualify as creative economy?
Yes.
Okay.
And, yes.
So, audio production and?
Exactly. My apologies to the radio station, you're exactly right. In fact, we did an interview, and Mr. Granger was kind enough to invite the EDA chair and me over to do an interview about the arts district, and while we sat in the interview, we said, "We're in a creative business right now."
Comments?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'm not going to ask you any questions, you can sit down.
Be sitting.
At least, I think I will. You know, the question comes about in my mind, what is the role of city council? You know, our role is to establish policy, explore vision opportunities, look for ways we can enhance the city, but ultimately, it's to look out for the, oversee the health, safety, and welfare of the community. We can't get too much into the day-to-day operations or application, that's why we have a city manager, in this council city manager form of government. When it comes to establishing vision, if we have to separate that from the actual operation of the city, all we can really do is create a framework that allows things to happen or prevents some other things from happening. But we can't always necessarily determine that this one particular thing will happen, this is how it's going to happen, because that's not our role. So, as I see the arts district ordinance, it's an opportunity for us to overlay an ordinance on an existing zoning structure that gives property owners a choice. They can choose to rent to people who would qualify for tax incentives under the arts district ordinance, or they could choose not to. And it gives prospective tenants a choice. They can choose to try to rent or move into a district that has these tax incentives, or they can choose not to. So, that's all worked out in the free market, but that's not council's decision, and it's not really our role. Folks have asked, you know, what is the benefit to a property owner in the district if they're not going to be the person who's undertaking the work, or if it's not an owner-occupied business or an owner-occupied residence? Well, the benefit is that you have an additional choice that you didn't have before, you have an additional opportunity. Now, we've had the question about residential vacancy, and there is very little, if any, residential vacancy in the area. As I understand it, from the few property owners I've talked to, as soon as you put a home up for rent, the applications come pouring in pretty quickly. And that might be dependent somewhat on the time of the year. So, we know there's demand for this area because it is a popular, for a variety of reasons, location, probably being chief among them and character of the area, right there with it. But it's more than that, because we have to consider more than just the property owner. Of course, we're concerned about the property owner's wants, needs, and interests. But if we're not concerned beyond that, then we're not representing the entire city. And wherever there is property, there is city, commonly-owned, community-owned property going through that. We have streets and sidewalks throughout this community. Just as if we had one single property owner who is the sole owner of a particular zoning district, we wouldn't just do anything that property owner wanted without considering what's the benefit to the entire community. The advantage of the arts district is that we're providing something that potentially has benefit to the entire community because it creates a different, a potential for a different kind of ambiance. It creates potential for increased business interest and activity. It creates an aesthetic, aesthetically appealing characteristic that might draw more tourists or visitors to this community, and we all know how heavily we rely on visitor contribution to our operating revenues. And Mr. Tull, we remind us of that all the time, how different we are from many communities where residents through property tax and businesses through business tax are providing the vast majority of operating capital, and that's not the case here. So, anything we can do to make this area more attractive and still not put a burden on the folks in this district, to me, just makes a great deal of sense. Some folks have asked about student housing. Are we trying to crowd student housing out of this neighborhood? I can tell you absolutely, definitely, I am not, because this is one of the few areas of the city that I can think of off the top of my head. We have a fairly high concentration of student rentals, well, no, there is a high concentration of rentals. I believe a fairly large component of those are students, and yet, we have relatively very little, very few problems or very little conflict in the area because of that. So, we're not trying to drive students out. So, people will say, "Well, then, how do you expect artists to move in if the students are still living there?" Well, what we certainly hope is that we can work in the coming years to help the college appreciate opportunities individually and hopefully in partnerships with private business to provide more student-oriented housing. Again, not to take away from this district or any other district, but if the college is going to grow by another 150 students, that's a, another 150 people we're going to have to house that we're not currently working with. So, we need to keep this dynamic going, and we need to keep working back and forth. The one point that's been raised that I think we, well, a lot of this deserves continued attention, but the parking issue, as Ms. Knudsen mentioned, you know, that's a problem she would like to have. I'd sort of like to have it, but not really. I'd like for more demand, more traffic in the area, but I'd like for us to be aware of that and able to work out solutions before a real problem or a greater problem develops. And I think that's important. And lastly, I'd like to say that, well, almost lastly, that communication is going to be important here going forward because there are other potential developments, independent of this ordinance, but that may affect this area, and I hope that staff can help us work out a plan to keep the residents informed on an ongoing basis and keep that dialogue going so that we can seek their input, just maybe not in the same format as Ms. Miller described at our work session on Monday, but I think that's a great example of how we work with a neighborhood to make sure that we're doing something that's in the best interest of all. And the last thing I wanted to mention was, a question came up at the public meeting a week ago Monday about, what about the emergency vehicles? What about fire, police, EMS, up and down the streets? How disruptive would that be to the ambiance of the arts district? Well, I think it's worth noting that the police and fire station is actually closer to the historic area of Colonial Williamsburg than it is to the arts district. We regularly have vehicles going down either side, right on the perimeter of that 18th century environment, and it will continue to happen, and it's a necessity, because that emergency call at that moment is the most urgent thing that needs to be dealt with, not somebody's particular enjoyment of an ambiance. But if it works for the historic area, I don't see any reason why it can't work for the arts district as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Just going to echo a few things Frouting said. Several things I like, first of which, this is showing the city's investment in a diversified economy. This is reaching out to groups of folks who, it's an intent of reach out to a group of folks who diversify what goes on in the city, diversify the flavor and cultural aspects of what we all enjoy. I particularly appreciate that it may be extending a hand to the young, creative professionals, many of which are already at the college, who, as they matriculate, have a greater opportunity to stay and do unique things here. Also appreciate your point about student housing. This is, you know, it's an evolving topic. This is something that is going to fit into a larger, a larger spectrum plan, and I think it's, being conscious of that as we move forward, very good. That's about it.
Great, thank you. Doug?
Thank you. I will restate all the things, all the wonderful things about this that have already been said, just kind of rehashing it, because I do think that what the EDA has done in trying to incentivize businesses come to Williamsburg is absolutely crucial to our survival moving forward. Can't bear bills unless we have some revenues coming in. However, I do have some concerns, and, you know, when we create ordinance like this, I think it's incumbent upon us to be mindful that we should try to set them up to be successful. And already, we've heard, you know, a great deal from the property owners in this area that are suspect and leery and maybe, it's fair to say, not likely to participate in running their properties to artisan, for whatever reason. And so, you know, one of the things we all learned, whether we went to business school or not, it's location, location, location. And it just seems to me that if we're trying to create an arts district, that we ought to set it up in the proper location where it has the greatest likelihood of success. And to me, that's where we already have, you know, a world-renowned museum, multiple art galleries, you know, the Chamber of Commerce across the street is an art gallery. And I just think the Prince George Street area, Scotland Street, Armstead, Henry Street would be much better suited for an arts district, and suited in terms of having the greatest viability for success. So, I think we're looking at the wrong location. It's not a bad location, but it's not the most opportune, and I think if we're going to look to this 15, 20 years, it's not going to happen within that timeframe. The other concern I have is the continual erosion of our residential neighborhoods. You know, people used to live on Duke of Gloucester Street. Well, it became commercialized, and those people moved off. People used to live in, on Scotland Street and Henry Street, and some still do, but we've pushed them back. People lived on, up north end of Jamestown Road, college kind of bought that, and the residents have been pushed back. My concern is, this is another encroachment into what is a residential neighborhood that will push families and residents away from that area. And where does it stop? You know, what's the next neighborhood? Is it, you know, east of the lodge? Is it further down Jamestown Road, Indian Springs, where there's already significant pressure on those neighborhoods? You know, and the student housing issue is of grave concern to mine, I think. You know, if this arts district were successful in this area, it's less likely that the college students would have these houses to rent, and I think we need to preserve that opportunity for them. And so, so I can't support, I support the ordinance, the concept of the ordinance, I cannot support having it in this location. Perhaps if we redrew the lines to exclude, you know, one lot back off Richmond Road, you know, as I look at my map, everything that's, you know, beyond the blue houses that have but Richmond Road, maybe I could consider that. But I think there's too many unintended consequences to locating this here. That's probably my significant challenge. And then the, it's not the best location. We should put it in the downtown area. There's large houses, there's large buildings that could be incorporated in this. You know, the Goodwin Building, for example, would be a great place for art studios on the first floor and residential above it. Brown Hall, you know, we've got Zicallis Building, Hitchens Building, Empirical Building, Mamma Mia's Project, all of those areas, you know, have that opportunity. College apartments are there. That's where we would create, I think, the vibrancy that an arts district could bring, and it's, and we have parking garages there, so.
Thank you. Judy?
Well, I made most of my comments, but just a couple further. I think I have to disagree with Mr. Palms about the location. For one thing, the focus group, excuse me, the focus group did look at the downtown, I understand, and rejected it for several reasons as they, or maybe didn't reject it as found something else a little better. So, I think when you appoint a focus group, you ought to pay attention to them, and I think they did a lot of study and research into this. I am also old enough and have lived here long enough to remember when they tried to do something similar on Peacock Hill, and there was a lot of talk at one point about making Peacock Hill into an arts district, and it didn't work for various reasons, and now Peacock Hill's other things. So, I am not that, and that was what I would consider downtown, and I just don't think it would work that way. So, I think I much prefer this location. The other thing, the student housing, I think that both Scott and Paul made really good comments about what a fluid issue this is, and I don't think we ought to say, "That's a neighborhood that's student housing, and we can't touch it," because I think it's a movable target. And as Scott said, we need to keep working on it, but to turn down an economic development opportunity like this, I don't think that's a good enough reason, so.
Thanks. Let me just make a couple of comments, and then I'll see if we want to move to a motion. I think one thing that has not been part of this conversation is that, as you look at this area, it's between two well-defined areas, and this is part of our discussion for this statement of goals and objectives and outcome, and we talked about this in the State of the City address. You know, downtown is a well-defined area focused on the college, Colonial Williamsburg, and municipal activities, the library municipal. Those really define what that area is and create opportunities for businesses to serve those three entities. And so, I'm actually not too worried about downtown. I think it has a focus, it has a purpose, and what have you. At the other end is the Richmond Road area from bypass out, which is another well-defined area that has a particular economic focus, and it serves that focus very well. This area is in between, and this area is vitally important to the economic health of this city and its future. We have some changes occurring in that area, the new school of education. I think anything we can do to create additional vitality in this critical part of the city is important, and that's exactly what this arts district does. So, I think it's exactly in the right place. I think it has absolutely no impact on the residential area because it's zone-residential, it's not going to turn into commercial. Having an artist's studio in a home is not the same thing as having a retail business in a neighborhood. So, I don't see that the residential nature of the residential parts of this district are going to change in any dramatic way. So, I think it is exactly in the right place, and I think this is something that, as others have said, is in the best interest of this community. That being said, I'll see if anyone wants to say anything further.
I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Palms, do you mind? Can you help? I can appreciate there's some concern among a number of the residents in this area, or property owners, I should say, in this area, about what the ultimate goals of council are relative to this ordinance and what this ordinance might do to the neighborhood. And I want to be sensitive to that, I think we all are sensitive to that, and if I thought there was any negative impact that we would be creating here, I would say, you're right, we shouldn't do this. But one thing in particular you mentioned, I'd just like you to help me understand better. How are we eroding a neighborhood that we're not changing the zoning from what it currently is, which is residential? And anybody who would have a home-based business would still have to live there, so it has to stay residential. And I'm not saying you don't have a good point, I just don't, I hope you can help me see it.
If, my point is, if it's successful and the art district takes off, and then it, you know, houses convert more to a retail aspect, or have, you know, people coming and going, there's more traffic on the street, then it becomes less desirable to live, not unlike what's happened to Scotland Street and that North Hendrick Street area, those, you know, great big homes in there where families have lived for years, but it's less desirable as a residential community because, I think, the commercialization of the downtown area. You know, there used to be a shopping grocery store in the downtown area, but as residents have moved away... have moved away, it's, it's become less desirable, you know, as a, as a residential community. And I see this type of, if successful, this type of ordinance could have a negative impact. None of us have a crystal ball to be able to predict what happens. But because we don't have that crystal ball, I prefer not to, to set up a scenario where we could have a detrimental effect on our, our neighborhoods.
Yeah, and just going to the point about residential desirability, from almost, and this is just anecdotal observation, I don't have any statistics or a study to back it up, but from almost everybody I talk to, they would love to live right here. But they, there's a lack of availability because of the high demand, and it's a lot more expensive because of the high demand. So, and that's another way of looking at it, too. The other question is, in consideration of, and I'll just say this area, but I mean the downtown area that you were referring to, it seems that it's dominated by institutional uses at this point, whether it's Colonial Williamsburg, whether it's the college, whether it's the churches on Richmond Road, whether it's the Housing and Redevelopment Authority at the Blatton Building in the Triangle Block, whether it's the library, or the whole municipal structure with the police and fire, municipal building, Striker Building, community building, the parking garage, and then Merchant Square, there's, there's not a lot left, is there?
Well, how much do you need? And certainly, there's, there's plenty of space. I think if we looked at the Mamma Mia's Project and if, if we really wanted to incentivize something, maybe we would incentivize the business that's going to redevelop there. And perhaps we build a building that looks more like the Empirical Building, where more residents could live above it. You know, if we included other, some of the larger buildings in that area that could, could be converted, you know, like, like Artscape had originally, what they normally do in other areas, then they could be incorporated into that, you know, Brown Hall. I know it's owned by the college, but if the opportunity's there and it's that desirable, then, then, you know, maybe we could find a way to convert that. There's, there's vacant land on Boundary Street, you know, next to the Master Craftsman, that's, that's ripe for redevelopment. There's a smattering of lots there as well, of Scotland Street, that could be built. The Health Foundation Building, for the most part, it's, it's not, not, you know, not, not heavily used. That might be a great opportunity to put, you know, retail and living in a, in a cooperative type of setting for artists. I think the, the opportunity's there. But what's also there is, you know, Colonial Williamsburg sells 686,000 tickets and does another million people walking in that street. We have a market, and that market could help sustain the artists that move in that area. You know, we've talked about, the Gutification Advisory Committee's talked about, when you stand there at that Masses Cameron, you look up Prince George Street, there doesn't appear to be much reason to go down there. But if we create, you know, an arts district and there's some revitalization of that area and, you know, there's synergy, there's activity, well, then people will, will naturally bleed from the Merchant Square area through Prince George Street, you know, over to the, the Hitchens Building area and, and come forward towards the Housing Authority, Authority Building on the, the corner of Armstead in Scotland. There's people, there's activity, and that, to me, is what's going to take to make an arts district successful. There's a built-in market there.
That, that, there is a built-in market, and I think it has other higher and better uses than, than an arts district in that particular location. And I think that those developments are going to take place, and we will see changes in that area. Does anybody else have any further comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the approval of proposed ordinance 1101, the Arts and Cultural District, using map number two.
Second. And map number two is the redrawn map with Casey Property not in it? Is that, is that sufficient? Okay. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knudsen? Aye. Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good discussion. Before we go on, I would like to again sort of give particular thanks to Michelle DeWitt for all her hard work on this. And I hope you will convey council's appreciation to the EDA for all their work in, on this ordinance and the efforts to move this forward. So thank, thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to say the same thing. My no vote has no way of, you know, a reflection of, of what the EDA and you haven't done. I just have, you know, a particular feeling. But I commend Chairman Mason at the EDA and you for, for coming up with creative ideas, being proactive to, you know, generate and stimulate business in, in the city. You know, I, I, more than anyone, probably appreciate, you know, the business environment. So, thank you.
And if I could just throw out one more thanks. We had a lot of property owners in this area who invested a lot of time and energy. We perhaps got off not on the best foot, maybe the wrong foot. We learned from that. I think we can work on the communication, but in a very short period, these folks put in a lot of effort to help enhance that communication, and we appreciate that.
Thanks. The next order of business is new business appointments to boards and commissions.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council appoint Sean Driscoll to replace Sarah Stafford as the Planning Commission representative on the Architectural Review Board effective immediately for a term to expire December 31st, 2014.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knudsen? Aye. Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
That brings us to our final agenda item, which is open forum. This is a time when we invite anyone who wishes to address council on any matter to please come forward. If you do wish to address council, please come forward and state your name and, and address. Before we begin, I have two speakers' cards. The first is Gary Shelley. Welcome, Mr. Shelley.
Thank you. I am Gary Shelley, 205 Indian Springs Road. And I want to comment briefly about the comments that were made after the discussion in the arts district at last month's meeting. What stood out were the comments made by Mr. Friling and Ms. Knudsen. Mr. Friling emphasized the importance it is of communication. Communication's a two-way street. It needs to come from the citizens, it needs to come from council. Doing what is legally sufficient is one thing, but sometimes we need to do more. Ms. Knudsen was, seemed to be very surprised at the level of mistrust there is in this city against our councilmen. After all, if you can't, can't trust our councilmen, who can we trust? But this brings me back to an issue that's very near and dear to my heart, of which I've spoken about over the years on numerous occasions before this council. And that was the acquisition that the RHA made of 110 Harrison. Now, I'm not going to go into the details much about what occurred there, but what I would like to say is, the way that the, the aftermath of it in my numerous, after my numerous comments. Now, there were questions that remained unanswered after I spoke, and I spoke directly about them. For one, why was the public absolutely shut out in comment before a vote was ever made on, on the significant amount of money the city loaned to the RHA for the acquisition of property? I asked that over and over, and council never responded. Communication on my part, no communication on council's part. There were other very legitimate concerns I had about it. For example, when the property was acquired, why were none of those common sense safeguards for our citizens, our taxpayers of the appraisal, and the inspection never done? Council seemed to be, fall back on, or the city, I should say, fell back on saying that we couldn't foresee the problems that were in that house. Well, of course not, without a professional inspection. And so I asked, why was one never done, but council never communicated back? Also, it unfortunately, it took quite a few freedom of information requests to find out exactly what did take place behind the scenes with this whole ordeal. There were red flags all over the place with it. I certainly was not alone. There were other people in the community, totally unaffiliated with me, who saw that something was quite amiss with that particular deal. And one of the things that came to light, a couple of things of interest. One was that the RHA actually did not buy the property directly from the owner, as council leaders believe, but from the, the RHA purchased the rights to an assignment of contract from another individual who's friendly with the, the council. And certainly there was a, an appearance of nepotism involved here, and I brought that to the council's attention, and nobody, nobody mentioned that. Lastly, I'd like to say that prior to, and you look a little confused, I'll be glad to go over that with you some of the times you'd like. Lastly, I'd like to say that in researching why and how the city was shut out of, of making any comment prior to the, the council approval, there was a retreat that the council had. And of course, the council was required by law to file minutes of, of that retreat. Well, there were no minutes filed at that time. And so when this was exposed some years later, the council voted in using an agenda that the city manager had, but without any explanation at all to the city, to the citizens about why it was done three years later, nothing, certainly the citizens were expecting something from our city attorney as to why and what happened and how we're doing it later. But the appearance of impropriety is just all over the place. When council sits stone-faced and says nothing, it just makes things worse and worse for people that follow them. So I would like to bring that, these things to your attention. And I'd just like to know that, you know, I'm not the least bit surprised at the, I'm not outpouring of distrust to our council with this arts district discussions, and hopefully we can get a better job in the future from our council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. The next speaker card is John Whitley.
I'm John Whitley, 110 Governor Berkeley Road. I represent no business, organization or group. I am just really thankful that not all long-haired, balding, white-bearded folk think alike. I commend you for your openness, for your forward thinking, for your bringing us rapidly into the 21st century. I think with saddened heart what might have happened had a knot in my backyard and NIMBY attitude existed years ago when the good Reverend and Mr. Rockefeller were looking at our city and its, and its future. I see you cast in similar light as they, that you have a, a bold spirit to move forward with what you perceive as being to the betterment of the people and, and the community. And I commend you. I commend your honesty, I commend your trustworthiness, and I commend your willingness to risk. I'm so pleased that you have captured a true sense of creativity by bringing forward a creative economy to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. If anyone else wishes to address council on any matter, this is an opportunity to do so, and I would ask you to please come forward and state your name and address.
Good afternoon. I'm Sabrina Fairbanks. I'm a property owner, 105 With Avenue. And I would propose that this area of the arts district was probably discussed and decided on long ago. As I was looking at your suggestion at the comprehensive plan, it, there's even a special exemption for artists and artisans in this area. I don't know what other areas that was included, but it seems to me that the former council and mayor had decided that this would be where the arts district is. That said, I think it was a problem that there were no property owners involved in any of your planning. And now that it's a done deal, I might suggest that it would improve the communication and maybe solve the problem of having one city official being responsible for deciding who's going to be considered a creative person in this. And perhaps you could select a resident from that area, you know, to help you with that, particularly since those people are going to have to live next door, you know, to the creative economies that come in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address city council on any matter? If not, I'll turn back to council to see if there's any further comments or questions. And if not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knudsen? Aye. Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.